All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 5th at 6:30 PM. This is the ONTG Local Schools Board of Education. They called a meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Bartz is absent. Mrs. Feesal?
Here.
Mr. King? I apologize.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and adjourn. Please, please.
(coughing) 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 (coughing)
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written, please.
Don't move.
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we're right into the board's present report. I just have two quick items. So, as we've talked about today's election day, please get out and vote. No matter what you vote, at least get out and vote. Do the task. And I guess I would want to be the first one to congratulate Ms. Patrick.
(laughing) The Keisha.
Our newest member in the back.
The Keisha Wise.
The Keisha Wise.
And yourself.
Well, it's not over yet, so I'm gonna jinx myself.
If you voted, you're good.
I voted. I did vote, thank you.
Did you vote for yourself? You can't say.
Photopraxis.
I voted for him.
So, with that theme of voting, so tonight we are voting on a levy ask. So with that, I do wanna acknowledge the great work today of the Facilities Committee, the Administration, the Finance and Audit Committee to get us to this point of coalescing around a number and an ask and moving forward in the process. It is very rewarding to work with reasonable people that can disagree but to ultimately rally behind the effort and get the job done. So with that, I look forward to the discussion tonight and the vote. So, with that, I will move to the superintendent's report.
Yes, for the first time, I don't have much to say since we just met and wanted to keep our discussion focused on that probably most important thing we talked about, which is our future levy scenario. So, pass.
Really? Because I'd like to compliment you on your presentation today at the home road extension ceremony. Mr. Rafe gave a very nice speech.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I didn't realize how long that project was in the works.
The Curbler property's been, Julie, you, the Curbler property is supposed to be...
The Curbler property was gonna be the cobblestone development. It was gonna be homes.
Probably a thousand homes.
Yeah, we were planning on putting an elementary school there, actually. And then the recession hit and that fell through. I think what's there now is great.
And the future road will be...
Absolutely.
Huge benefit. Bridge over Shanahan.
Yeah. All right, well, that's terrific. So, Ms. Hatfield, your attendance report?
Yes, please. I'm sorry, I do have a couple of items that'll take just a moment, though. I just wanna make sure that we are giving a recognition for the donations that we have on the agenda. We have donations to Heritage Elementary PTO, or from the PTO to Heritage Elementary School, excuse me, for a playground gaga pit. We have donations from Liberty Tree Elementary School PTO to Liberty Tree for a Rockscape Playground Climber, for Wyandotte Run Elementary School from Arring Kerriston. Forgive me if I did not pronounce your name correctly. But we have benches for the Secret Garden area donated. And then also to Liberty High School from the Liberty High School Service Club, Serenity Garden donation. The ONTG Athletic Boosters and ONTG High School Athletics to ONTG High School Weight Room Replacement Flooring. ONTG Orange Athletic Boosters to ONTG Local Schools. We have a donation for Boys Basketball Coach Supplemental. And from ONTG Liberty Athletic Boosters to ONTG Local Additional Dollars for Girls Basketball and to Boys Basketball Coach Supplementals. So as always, we appreciate those donations and all of the donations that our community makes within kind donations and/or their time. With that, we will be covering some of the other items on the agenda as we walk through our discussion. So I'll take any questions you may have on the action items.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public participation?
No, we do not.
All right, let's roll right into the discussion items. Dr. Jack Fetti, the first reading of the board policy update?
Good evening. I'm presenting the first reading of the board policy updates. The board's policy committee met on October 11th to review all of these policies and make the recommendations that are before you. Do you have any questions? Are you good?
I do.
Yes.
On the graduation requirement, specifically the physical education waiver, it now includes show choir. But I just wanted clarification because I thought that it only impacted students like sophomores and below, like they weren't gonna, like the state regulation wasn't gonna accept it for juniors and seniors. But do you know if that's the case?
I don't believe that there was ever, I don't think that they restricted it in that way. I think most juniors and seniors have already fulfilled the requirement.
Have already got it.
And this is, this is a district requested policy anyway because the state law changed, but NEOLAD hasn't put out a new template yet. And it just didn't feel right to keep the old requirements in policy. So we made our own draft for the time being, and we'll probably see a NEOLAD template coming out here at the next spring update.
Okay.
But yes, the show choir is now gonna be in policy.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, the next discussion item is the future levy scenarios. Mr. Rafe and Ms. Hatfield?
Absolutely. So, we have presented you with a packet of materials for this evening's conversation. That packet is a culmination of a lot of information that we have shared, either in presentations or in requested materials over the last couple of months. So you have that before you. It discusses the millage models that we have presented for 5.9 mills through and including 9.5 mills for operating. It discusses the bond package at a no-new-tax millage. And then it also discusses, or walks you through, the capital needs and resources that we have and recommendation for further PI millage rates. So with that, I think we just wanted to make sure that you had that before you again, and we'll take questions as we walk through the discussion on what we would like to bring forward to the community for an operating millage total and a permanent improvement millage total.
We also wanna finalize the bond, obviously, the bond package. So, the things we've discussed obviously include a new elementary to open in 2021, new middle school, and a second elementary to open in 2023, school year, fall '23, securing enhancements to all the, all the buildings that, the remaining buildings that don't, or don't currently have secure entrances, various high school improvements, middle school improvements, enhancements to all of our elementary school playgrounds to make them ADA compliant and safer with soft surface playgrounds, some transportation enhancements, and then general needs in the area of additional parking at Hyatt's, athletic fields, and mechanical, and roofing needs throughout the district, and then the administrative office The initial bond package list that we had presented early, early in this process included 4.5 million for the administrative office facility. As you know, with our contract for the facility, we got required to give two bids, one independent of, one from us and one from the owner, and then we have to agree on a agreed-upon-price or negotiate an agreed-upon price with that bid. Given the state of the economy and valuation throughout the district that continues to increase, the number we had originally planned was 4.5 million, but we think it's more prudent to include in the bond package a total of 5 million because it, because there is a likely, a strong likelihood that the bid could come in higher than what, but of course, we'll only sell bonds for what, this is a maximum list, like for the elementary schools. It includes some contingencies that we talked about to cover. The cost of construction certainly is, we're able to predict it pretty closely, obviously closely when we're talking about bidding it in 2020, but the further out we go with the new middle school and the new elementary school, there's some concerns about future costs. So, that's...
So, but again, for this building, so even though we've assumed a $5 million for the bond package, we'll know the number before the bonds are issued?
Correct.
It'll be trued up?
Correct.
Based upon that?
Correct. And I misspoke when I gave the description of the difference at our previous presentation, so I apologize for that.
And when will we know that? Like, what's the date? Like, for an appraisal? We started the process...
Yeah, we have started. We actually had, the first appraisal was conducted, it's not completed.
No.
And then the owner's going back and through and doing theirs.
So they get to do one, too?
Correct. Yeah, so just, so we're clear.
That's what's happened before.
That, that, the number that's in this bond package does, does not include any money for any type of renovations or improvements to this off, to this facility. You know, in the, in the future, once we own the facility, we will maintain it like we do all of our facilities. But this bond pa, this package, this no-new-millage bond package does not include any money dedicated towards renovations.
So, do we have any questions on the bond package?
Just to reiterate what the total bond package is that we're going out for, one, I'm looking at it from my, it was like 130 million?
Thirty-four?
134.7.
Okay. Yes. And for, for the resolution purposes, it is rounded to 134.7, so 134,700,000. If we would have to sell that entire amount, you're not gonna be able to sell 632,000 and change in bonds, right? So you have to have a rounded even number to take it to market. That's why the bond resolution has a different dollar amount listed.
So it cannot exceed but be less?
Correct. It can totally be less, but it cannot exceed that amount. And again, it's no additional millage, so the current taxes paid by our taxpayers are not impacted with the bond portion. Correct.
Okay. So I think we're, we're good with the capital?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Gonna move on to the operating ask?
Maybe, I would just go, not to disagree, but maybe PI would like easier because it's kinda how we progress through this, through this.
You can go first, let's take PI.
Yeah, all right, I'll take it on first. There you go. So obviously, you, you know, Mr. Gordon, I think, thank you for doing a great job analyzing our, our capital needs for the near term and, and the long term, because Jeff has looked at it over a span of 20 years. Initially, you know, when you looked at the initial list of where we were with all of our capital needs, and Emily, I think, you know, did a great job of putting together a spreadsheet of what that looks like and how it budgets out over, over the course of time. Knowing the constraints of where we are with operating dollars and the need for operating dollars, we've discussed the possi, you know, we, we think long-term additional millage and permanent improvements is certainly warranted. Obviously, in 2016, we, for the first time, passed one mill of permanent improvement millage, dedicated permanent improvement millage. And as I try to explain to the community, it's really important that we have that set-aside millage so that a future board can't come in and decide to not maintain buildings. There is dedicated funds to maintain those buildings. We looked at that overall need in the, in the short term of the next five or so years because as we know in ONTG, the next levy isn't an if, it's a when. Unfortunately, because of state funding, we think we can manage those near-term capital needs with a half-mill of permanent improvement, additional permanent improvement dollars. We've moved some of the bigger items into the bond package, so additional buses, roofing, which, you know, has a 25 to 30-year lifespan, mechanicals like chillers that have 25-year lifespans into the bond package, so that we moved those, those were initially in Mr. Gordon's capital needs and resources presentation that kinda spoke to that need for an additional mill. I think we can incrementally go at that permanent improvement need moving forward. So, our recommendation would be that we move forward with another half-mill of dedicated permanent improvement money, which would raise roughly 2.1 additional, 2.1 million additional dollars.
Does anyone have any questions on the recommendation to go forward with the PI request of a half a mill?
I just wanna point out that the one mill that we approved four years ago, almost four years ago, it's now been rolled back to .91. You know, so it's already...
The same thing said another way. The half a mill we're asking for today is almost like three-quarters of a mill four years ago.
Yeah.
Because of the dollar amount that it raises. It's been back to the dollar.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right. So it's estimated that that one mill would raise $3.2 million. It's raising roughly 3.6 because of the valuation growth. And so, we're also looking at that, knowing that we are roughly around $4.2 million collections on a mill. So, just shows the progression and the continued valuation growth in our community as we continue to move forward and age through that cycle.
You know, I think it, you know, one, one mill additional PI is, there's enough work to be, to take care of all that. But I think it's more prudent, more fiscally responsible to attack it incrementally, get it as, as more, again, as more closely to where we need it. And then additionally, as, as the district moves forward, five years out or four years out or so, the valuation of the district will have increased. So an additional half-mill will generate even more in the future to address that, you know, as, as the needs continue to grow. But, you know, districts like us, Westerville, Dublin, you know, they're, they're collecting three mills of PI because they're 20 years older than us.
So it's safe to say we will be asking for at least another half-mill the next time around?
Some point.
I would, I would, you know, again, that, I, it's certainly difficult to predict tomorrow sometimes around here, five years from now. The additional PI needs are certainly in the future of the district.
That's what it says.
Right. And we'll continue to monitor that and reassess the va, the value of that and the needs of that as we move forward.
Okay. We're good on the, yeah. Actually, I'm probably, I'm, I'm, Ms. Roger, in his absence, did provide a brief statement. Didn't want to drag him to the record. Let me read that now before we get too far. So the email is addressed to Mr. O'Brien, and it was to the ONTG Board of Education. Mr. Rafe, Ms. Hatfield, those who attend us. I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. Due to my work travel schedule, in all that, I object. In Roger's defense, he actually moved a meeting to today from yesterday, and then when my meetings got moved to today, he was a team player and, you're able to keep it on the fifth and get the meeting done, frankly, based upon a change in my schedule. But in any event, it is difficult, it is a difficult balance of times, and I want you to know, you, you and those that attend us to know that I wish I was there. Tonight, the Board of Education takes an important step forward in continuing to address the needs of our explosive growth in students. As we all know, with the absence of increased state funding, ONTG local schools must continue to rely on our taxpayers to support the district. I consider myself a grateful citizen of the district as well as a thankful one for the ongoing support of our residents. This levy is a strategic look into the longer-term future of the district, and the future continues to be bright. In closing, let me say while I'm not there to vote in person on this issue, I support it fully. This effort will allow our students to continue to flourish and reap the benefits of some of the best educational and co-curricular opportunities in the state. My best to the board and the attendings tonight, kind regards, Roger Bartz. All right. So with that, red it to the record, let's transition to the operating ask. Mr. Rafe, Ms. Hatfield, do you have a recommendation?
I would think that, well, we know from prior conversations that the 5.9 mills that we talked about previously is not sufficient. We know the 9.5 mills is definitely off the table as more than what we would need currently. When we think about where we would like to recommend and be able to continue our operating practices, continuing what we have now would be roughly a 7.5-mill ask, or 7.5. And then if we want to take a look at, you know, thinking about additional programmatic changes would be closer to a 7.9 range. So within that range, we are looking to have a conversation with the board to understand what your thoughts are with that.
Just for dollars, so that people understand the dollar value that we're talking about, a 7.9-mill levy would be an additional $276.50 per 100,000. So if your home is $100,000, which not many of them are, I think the average sale price is $358,000, but we can do the math. A 7.9 is $276.50 additional a year. I looked at a, okay, I did do 358. Three, so if you did a 358 total with a .5 PI and a 7.9 for operating on a $358,000 home, it's $1,053 of additional tax dollars. If you did a 7.9 and a .5 for the PI. So then I looked at going 7.4 and a .5, and you've got, so then that would be a total of 70, of 7.9 mills that you're asking for. And on a, the average sale price of a home at 358, that's $990 per year.
That feels a bit better.
It's a difference of like $63. So that's what we're talking here.
And to be clear, when we're looking at levies, we're forecasting into the future what our cash balance should be.
Right.
And so, I mean, we like to, we have an unofficial policy of having two months of expenditures in the bank. I've also attended OSBA leadership conferences where they also recommend that two months is the amount that you hold. When schools get really low, they're at risk of state, state takeovers. And so we want to stay, we're in that category, we want to stay away from that. So every time we look at these different mill rates, we're looking at how many days cash we would have on hand. And I know the number looks big, but when you're talking about, you know, we spend over 13, what is it now, 13 million dollars a month? 13, yeah. That's just one of them.
Well, if you're gonna, if you, if you wanna talk days, a 7.4-mill operating levy gives you 51 days of cash on hand. And a 7.9 gives you 60 days, so it's a difference of nine days. I think that is workable if you went with a 7.4.
And a 7.5 is 53 days.
Again, assuming the forecast of the next five years comes in exactly as we assume, which we know is not gonna happen.
Well, I think we've been fortunate managing to that, managing the numbers.
Typically gets better.
Typically does get better because we continue to keep expenses and revenue continues to be positive. Our variance, the biggest variance we get is from healthcare costs, which is because of changes we've made to that program. Thankfully, all of our associations came on board with all of those changes. It's helped us manage all those costs moving forward. You know, I think it's a delicate balance of asking for what we need to continue the excellent programs we have. And I don't know that the 7.9 necessarily adds dramatic programmatic improvements across, you know, to what we're doing because, because again, we're always managing for the next levy also. So I would say historically, we've asked for too little in some regards. We've always managed to it, made it work, but that, you know, again, the no-state funding and the continued growth continues to be our two greatest challenges. We'll make whatever number we get work. We'll make it work. And, you know, does, does a little additional millage give us more flexibility? Potentially, sure. Does it, but could it potentially make us stretch a three, you know, we, I don't know that we'd ever wanna say a more than a three-year promise, given the current state of state funding and what we continue to see from enrollment growth. So 7.4, absolutely, three-year promise. 7.9, you start talking about being able to stretch further and further, you know, who knows? But it is a balance. We wanna make sure we're asking for what we absolutely need, and again, being respectful and mindful of our community, what they're, what we know they'll support. Every time I meet with the staff, I tell them, I, we want all the same things you guys want. We want you to have the smallest class size as possible. With everything, everything we have in ONTG is valuable to somebody, otherwise we wouldn't be doing it. Every program we have is valuable. People ask, what more could we have? I don't know what more we could have. Really don't, because I think our overall program is so outstanding. There are always some things somebody wants, but I'm not sure there's anything else we absolutely need. But everything we have is valuable to somebody. So, you know, but I tell the staff all the time, we have to have a number on there that we know will pass, not a number we hope will pass. And I think when you start talking about over eight mills or even at eight mills, it starts to get you into a, into a range of, ooh. And hope's not a strategy when it comes to passing a levy.
Well, we do know that it's almost two mills just for growth per year is what we would need because of lack of funding and lack, what's the term here? They just, we're not funded for our current enrollment. How do you...
Yeah, we're, we're not funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, the additional growth funding that they gave us doesn't keep up with what we have.
Right.
In addition to what we've experienced in the past. So, you know, we are a locally funded district. We do have to continue to talk to our community about coming back from another ballot item for more tax dollars. It's unfortunate, but that's just the reality of how ONTG is funded. If we are talking about being able to, you know, as we look at maintaining the programs that we have and being able to continue a three-year planned cycle for levies, I think that 7.4 mills makes sense. That seems to be, if I'm hearing the conversation in the direction, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that's a millage rate that we are comfortable with and feel that our community could support in addition to that half-mill of permanent improvement, which would have a total tax package then of 7.9 mills.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Let's roll that. Yeah. Sorry.
I'd rather have that in four years than a year.
Well, yeah, I, yes, but I have to be cognizant of what our, of our taxpayers as well. You strike a, it's a delicate balance that we have to strike here.
Yeah.
Because we don't have a crystal ball that's gonna tell us what's gonna happen in, in three years. I, I don't know that a 7.9 would get us four years.
I don't think it will.
You don't, you don't?
Well...
We're looking at the numbers that I'm looking at now.
I think 7.4 would get us four years.
You do?
If we work on it, yeah.
What's the cash balance with 7.4 and 7.5?
Seven-
Give me the year.
7.4 is 51.
51 days on 7.4.
And-
7.5 is 53.
So it's two days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know that that's a big decision maker. I think the decision is 7.4 or 7.9.
Or 7.9. I, again, I stated at the last meeting, you know, when I'm at Macy's and I look at a shirt, it's $20 and the other one is $19.99, I'm going for the $19.99. It's just perception. If you're looking at the, if we go 7.9 plus a .5, you're at 8.4 mils, and your average homeowner now is going to be paying an additional $1,053. Whereas if you go with the 7.4 and the .5, you're at 9.90, an additional 9.90. Again, $63 difference, but it's all in the perception of things. I mean, we have to be cognizant of that. Not every taxpayer in the district has kids. So we have to understand that.
All right. So do we have any more discussion on that? Do we have to move to the action items? Yes. All right. Let's take, let's present the board action items. I'll present the board action items. I'm going to do it in two pieces, actually. I'm going to present, actually, three pieces. Board action item A. So to approve the operating mills and permanent improvement mills be entered into the bond resolution, I recommend that those mil amounts be 7.4 for operating and 0.5 for permanent improvement. So I'll make that motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to point out to people, again, it's not what else can we get? It's preserving the current programming that we have.
Because there is no cut list.
Right. If it, if it fails, as Mr. Rafe said at our last meeting, then you start looking at everything that is not mandated by the state. I always tell people, I cannot cut English that's mandated by the state. But anything else that's not mandated by the state, we just looked at new graduation requirements, anything else that's not required by the state becomes something that becomes in jeopardy. And that also includes class sizes.
All right. Any other discussion? Ms. Haffield, please call a roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I'll present board action item B, this to approve a resolution declaring the necessity of bond issue and levies of tax in excess of 10 mil limitation, which is submit the question of such issue to electors and requesting state consent, special needs designation, connection therewith.
Where are special needs?
Yeah.
District?
Yes.
Because of our-
Sorry. Motion second.
Oh, motion, okay. Doing discussion. I'm, I, yes, I move to-
Your motion?
I motion.
I'll second.
Explain what the, explain what the need of our special district need is.
So because we have more than 9% of our revenue in debt, we can, we are considered as special needs, and so with that, we have to ask for special consent to have a bond package. The valuation within the district, because it is high, allows us to do so and to move forward with that calculation to show that we can, in fact, pay that debt payment. So the resolution is combining the necessity of the bond issue and also the requesting the state consents to make sure that we can get all of the paperwork filed that we need to, to be in compliance for that bond sale.
All right. Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
We've done this before.
Yes, we've done this before. This is the same, this is the same nuance that was taken care of in the 2016 package as well. It has nothing to do with the no new millage. It just has to do with the size of the district and the continuation that we have to build facilities due to growth.
All right. Please call a roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I'll now present board action item C, to approve a memorandum of understanding to amend Article 27, Section 27, 1B, HSA funding with the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, the OAPSC, AF, ASB local, 4 AFL-CIO and its local number 322.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And then Emily, if you could be so kind to give a brief.
Absolutely.
Overview of what the memorandum is.
Yeah. Sure. So when we negotiated the contract with our, this is our Bus Driver Association, just to clarify, that's a long name for the OPEC 322, but it relates to our bus drivers. But when we negotiated the contract with the HSA funding in the benefits package, what we have found is that there is a special rule from the IRS that disqualifies anyone enrolled in Medicare to contribute into an HSA account. So if they've had one previously open, they can continue to use those funds, but they can no longer participate in contributions to fund that and keep that account going. So we worked with our membership and with our president, Mr. Vangeloff, is with us in support, to come up with an alternative for those folks that might be of age 65 and enrolled in Medicare. And so this speaks to those individuals. The MOU mirrors where we are with our HSA contributions in terms of how they are qualified, whether or not the member's spouse is available or a part of the union or not a part of the union, and all of those nuances pretty much mirror the HSA funding. It's just giving them another tool that they can use that meets IRS regulations if they are in that Medicare eligibility and enrollment. So we felt it was a fair use of the self-insured funds to offer another alternative to those folks in that situation.
Any other questions?
Any questions on that? All right. So please call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
So now, Ms. Haffield, you please present the treasure action item.
Yes, please. I would like to present treasure action items A and B for approval, please.
So moved.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. Please call a roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, please present the superintendent action items.
Yes, I'm going to start with Superintendent Action Item B5, which is for the approval of People Activity Supervisor Employment for 2019-10 for John C. Fiesel, high school, ONTG High School winter season, boys head basketball coach. So I'll start with that one.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Abstained.
Thank you. And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I will present the remaining Superintendent Action Items A, B, 1 through 4, and C through E for approval.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a roll.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Our next meeting is the 20th.
Is that right?
20th of November.
November 20th?
It's an odd day.
Here?
Yeah. Unfortunately, that they're having a basketball fundraiser that night that Mr. Rafe and I will have to miss.
Oh, darn it.
What is that? They're bracing money for Mr. Chirpess and Dylan.
Oh.
The Bears are playing the Braves.
Oh, wow.
Men and women, men and women's teams.
So please call the roll, Ms. Haffield.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.